Elementary school classroom enclosure project. Do we have any?
I just have a comment.
Yes, Mr. Rosenthal.
I'm glad we're getting around to this, because I know several parents have been asking about this for a couple of years now, so.
Yes, sir.
Please turn your microphone on, Mr. George.
Yeah, I agree with, you know, even I had, I got emails coming in, you know, like I talked to some parents and it was a concern and finally you're addressing it. It is, uh, thank you, and I, I think a lot of parents appreciate that, that tell us elementary.
Yes, sir.
Good, uh, Mrs. Tosan.
So I was gonna say the same, I'm glad we're getting to it, open concept, not, not so good. My questions are, um, where's the funding gonna come from for this?
Uh, we're still determining that, it'll probably either be the two thousand and seven bond fund or the major maintenance reserve.
What's major maintenance reserve?
Ma'am.
What is that, where?
That's the amount that we have, uh, set aside in our fund balance.
Okay.
That is, those assigned funds.
The unassigned funds?
It's assigned.
It is assigned.
It's assigned for major maintenance.
Okay, how much do we have in that right now?
Uh, if memory serves, I, I know it's over five million, uh, I can look it up here in a second.
So what's gonna determine that, two thousand and seven bond funds versus?
We're, we're taking a look at a lot of our, um, we have a lot of demands, as you know, on, on, on funding.
Right.
Um, we have a shortage on our, um, technology fund, not in our technology fund, our technology fund's okay, but, uh, as you know, the technology package was, was adopted at seventy million, but only thirty-nine million was funded through the bond, you know, so we've been trying to figure out how we're gonna fund that. So we just have a lot of competing priorities on that, but, uh, we'll, we'll either put it through the two thousand and seven, um, bond for, through the contingency or this major maintenance fund. Uh, but we're trying to look at all of those things at one time, we're having some meetings on that.
So it would come out of the contingency portion of the two thousand and seven bond?
Yes, ma'am, we still have leftover funds there.
Are you gonna bring that to us at the next board meeting or send us a memo on that?
Well, once, well, once this, uh, the funding for the, the project itself would end up being a, a, a board action item.
Action, okay, so my other question is, um, this is an agreement with Fort Bend and Architechnics Three, am I saying that right?
AT Three.
Okay, so where do they fit into our list of vendors from our bond, the ones that we approved, was it last board meeting? Where do they fit into that?
Architechnics Three. Um, they score on the RFQ for the bond, they were number seventeen.
And?
This is not a, this is not a bond project, so, uh, while we use this solicitation, uh, to determine that they were qualified, uh, we don't actually, we're not required to do an RFQ to select services, but we use this as a matter of practice because it was, it was available and it showed the information we needed.
Didn't we assign, was it the top twelve to the bond projects, memory serves?
Top fourteen.
Top fourteen.
Yes, ma'am, and this, this particular Dulles Wall project is not a bond project, it's not a two thousand and fourteen bond project.
Understand, I'm just curi-, I was curious as to where they fell in that, because we had a lot of discussion around vendors and how we're choosing vendors. So what made us choose them for this project?
Th- this particular vendor, uh, kind of became on our radar because they, they scored very high in, in their, um, past performance and in their personnel and, but what they, they had a, a reference that did not submit for the bond project, so we couldn't, can, you know, consider them for the bond work, but we could consider them for this, this particular work. So a, a reference is actually what, a, a lack of a submission of a reference is what kept them out of, of the running for bond projects.
So what made them a good fit for this project over, say, number sixteen or number fifteen?
Yes, ma'am, in, in particular, uh, on the bottom of the project, you can see that they've done a lot of, uh, renovation work here in our district. They did the warehouse renovations, they've done Willow Ridge High School additions and renovations, and they've most recently, for a lo-, another local school district, have actually done, um, classroom type conversions at another school district that just recently finished up.
And they will be given our current ed specs?
Yes, ma'am.
To be part of this?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, so this was not, I thought, I always thought this was in the two thousand and seven bond. This project was not specific to that, because I was under the impression it was.
I don't think so.
Not, not to my knowledge, I, I went back and checked everything and I, I didn't see it as a two thousand and seven bond project.
There was a lot of discussion about that, that wasn't there, that it was?
Right, so, uh, Mr. Rosenthal, I asked that very question, and when this item first came up as a possibility on the agenda, I asked, I did ask, uh, Dr. Dupree and Mr. Cleaver to research that, and we went back through the last, uh, three years, three and a half years, and we found, um, other, uh, projects that, um, involved heating and cooling, I think, Mr. Cleaver, that made us talk about this enclosure project, but it, we realized that while we had talked about it in the boardroom, it hadn't actually been a project either that we'd approved or that was on the bond list, is that accurate?
That's right, Ms. James, yes, uh, there were several classroom conversions in the two thousand and three bond, and when I first came on, uh, David Moore actually was the project manager, and we were working on fixing the air conditioning part. So apparently the, the classroom enclosures happened, but the air conditioning portion of the classroom enclosures wasn't just right, so they were fixing that at the time, and so we're making sure in this, the Dulles Classroom Enclosure Project, that the return air in particular is addressed, the return air for the air conditioning return air.
So that's why we felt like we discussed it, but it, we had discussed classroom, classroom enclosures, but we hadn't, um, but Dulles had never been done. So, that was, Ms., uh, Ms. Martinez, do you have a question or a comment?
Actually, just a little bit of background, the, um, Dulles Elementary campus was partially enclosed, I believe it was around two thousand and three or two thousand and four. Prior to that, the second through fifth grade area was completely open with no walls at all dividing anything, and in the two thousand and three, two thousand and four timeframe, there were partial enclosures provided to, to distinguish between classrooms and, um, and go up to the, to the ceiling, but not close in completely. So, um, that work was done at that time, and it was fairly extensive to enclose all the areas, no doors and no complete walls on the hallway side, but it did, uh, change the dynamics of that campus quite a bit without fully enclosing each, each of the classrooms.
Thank you, Mrs. Martinez, and so now the plan is to fully enclose the classrooms, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, that's very helpful, we could have used that information like two weeks ago, three, it's three. Just have to know who to ask, I guess, that's the bottom line, um, so I noticed, uh, that this item references an agreement, uh, Mr. Cleaver, and I didn't see an agreement in our, um, materials, and so I wonder if you could speak to that.
Yes, ma'am, we, uh, when the board book came due and the materials were due for the board book, we were still working with our Architechnics Three to get their proposal. We do have it now, we're running it through the legal process to have the, uh, professional services agreement applied to it, and we're, we're hopefully gonna be able to do that this week, um, and have a, a full professional service agreement done for next, for next Monday. I say that with Cynthia not in the room, but, uh, we're gonna work towards that.
Okay, 'cause I'm just looking at this, and I see the item talks about an agreement which you, we don't quite have fully, but yes, we'd like to see that. Then for the superintendent to negotiate and execute the final agreement, um, that, that would maybe be good, but probably in the, um, in the motion itself, we would wanna have the not to exceed amount in there, because that's not listed there. It's just for him, it gives some background information in the summary, but not necessarily in the item itself. So maybe we could update that a little bit for next, for next week, if that's possible.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much, and I think that would be good for, for Mrs. Rincon to, to look at that.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, any other questions on this item? Thank you all, all right, moving on now, item, uh, three, which is an agreement between Fort Bend ISD and, uh, the Department of Public, Texas Department of Public Safety. Do we have any comments or questions on this one? I actually had a similar comment, um, because it doesn't, uh, it, uh, talks about subsequent renewals, but it doesn't, um, define that, so we should maybe say a renewal, you know, a renewal number or a renewal or something, rather than just sort of unlimited is how I kind of read it. So I'd like to put some type of limit in there, and then is there a cost for this, or is it?
No, ma'am, it's a free service.
It's a free service, okay, it says it no charge, but, oh, you know.
This one, this one is truly free.
Just clarifying. Yes, Mr. Basham, please use a microphone, thank you, sir.
So the Transportation Department is required upon, uh, hiring any CDL bus driver and, um, several times throughout the year to review the, the driver's, uh, records, um, in order for them to maintain their Texas Department of Transportation CDL licenses. And you can pay for a service to provide these records, but the Texas Department of Safety will provide them at no charge to us. Uh, but they do require an interlocal agreement, because, uh, I think the Police Department has a similar agreement, but they can't share those records with Transportation, because it's outside their department, so we need our own, and this will allow us, free of charge, to get an interactive driver review system, because if a driver reaches a certain number of points on their license, whether personal use or bus use, they cannot legally maintain their CDL license, and this will allow us to stay in compliance and make sure that we have the safest drivers, uh, available. But it is free, but we have to do that interlocal in order, because we have to agree not to divulge the records outside our department.
Excellent, thank you, thank you for that explanation. Do we have discussion on this item? All right, then let's move on, our, uh, next item is seven B, which is, uh, proposed donations exceeding ten thousand dollars. Discussion on this item. All right, moving on, uh, seven C, um, proposed purchases exceeding fifty thousand dollars. Dr. Redback, one of these you told me was off. Number seven?
Yes, we would like to remove, um, number C, seven C seven.
Okay, so the camera installation will probably come back to us in December, uh, and so let's consider student accident insurance. Do we have, um, questions on this?
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Rosenthal?
Is there anything that brought, that brought this about, or, or why all of a sudden it was recommended, especially since it wasn't budgeted? Is, is this becoming standard practice?
This was something that was brought up to us by our, our new risk manager, she pointed out that we had the gap. Uh, initial, we, initially, we weren't going to go through with it, 'cause the, um, the cost before, what we had been spending and what the quotes had been, were in the quarter million range, she looked harder and harder and was able to come up with something that was a little bit more palatable. Whenever we discussed it amongst, you know, E-Team and Dr. Dupree definitely looked on it favorably, given the, you know, the, the higher numbers of free and reduced kids that we have, that, that may, that may be uninsured, and we've had instances where, uh, this certainly could have, could have come in handy, and so that's, that's why we decided to go and go through with this. This is something that was part of our cost structure before the, uh, the state funding, um, reductions in, uh, twenty-ten, twenty-eleven, and so this is something we're, we're just bringing back.
Thank you, Mr. Basham, do we have additional questions on this? All right, um, next is the clinic supplies.
Can, can we just back up on that one again?
Yes, 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 yes.
So, uh, how are we gonna track whether or not this is, and ends up being beneficial?
Well, we get information back from the, um, from the company on a regular basis in terms of how much usage there is, and so, I mean, we can report back to the board on that if you'd like for us to.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, please, thank you.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Rosenthal, anybody? All right, uh, clinic supplies, equipment and related items. This is regarding AEDs. And, and increase to the original award. So, uh, Mrs. Tosan?
So it says this is an unplanned purchase, did, why didn't we plan, uh, to replace these types of things? It talks about the, um, useful life, life of the AEDs being eight to ten years, did we not know we were gonna need to replace these?
I mean, I, I think that we may have known that whenever they were purchased, you know, eight, eight plus years ago, and I, I wasn't, I wasn't here at that time, and, and a recurring amount wasn't put into the budget at that time. This was brought to us as a gap, a current gap, uh, when we met as an operational team, uh, last month, and we, you know, heard about all of the, the potential things that could go wrong and, and everything.
They don't work.
Right, and so, so we felt, we, we, we really were not aware of what the, what the gap was, and so we, we felt like we needed to address it sooner than later. We could have waited for the budget process, but if something happened between now and that time.
You'd be in trouble.
So, so that's why it's in front of you, and we were able, and Bob was creative in terms of being able to add it on to the, the clinical supply bid, and, uh, so we could get it in front of the board at the next opportunity.
And these last couple say that they're gonna be funded through a transfer from the Workers' Compensation Fund. How much money is in that, and how, how does that really impact us?
We have several million in the Workers' Comp Fund, the Workers' Comp Fund fund balance is, is high in comparison to its annual cost, significantly higher in comparisons to its annual cost, and so, uh, it's a very healthy fund, uh, and so it's something that, you know, that we can use. We've actually been reducing what we charge the general fund to Workers' Comp, I've been trying to bring that down to a, a more reasonable amount, uh, and so, uh, that was just one of the avenues that we could fund something like this in an emergency, and it, and it's, and it's related to health, so.
I'd be interested in seeing how much we have in that, I don't recall.
I mean, it's in the, it's in the CAFR, it's in its own, it's in its own, uh, thing, but I'll, I'll look it up.
I can look at it later, I'm just curious, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, additional questions on, on this? Uh, the next i- item is band uniforms for Travis High School. And I've just got this giant thing in front of my. Um, okay, any questions on that? Uh, fire extinguisher, annual inspections, uh, questions on that? And I'm, I've got a problem with my computer, so I'll go back to paper. It's all right, I'm annoyed, 'cause I have some screen. Anything on that, roofing repairs?
Yeah, I just had a quick one on that, is, is there any reason, reason we don't have to bid this out, or?
I believe we are going with the, um, co-op purchase. Yeah, it's, it's, Choice Partners is a co-op purchase. And if, and if you'll notice, there's, uh, you know, twenty-four schools on this list, uh, three hundred thousand dollars, that's what we would call de minimis repairs, they're smaller repairs, there's nothing, not any large repairs on this.
So I have a question, is there, what is the reason, because this is work that's in our bond, is that correct?
Yes.
I mean, the, the roof, the, not this particular work, but so, but these roofs are in, are included as bond projects for this bond that we just passed in twenty-fourteen, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, the ones on page thirty-three.
Yeah. Yes.
The ones on page thirty-three do have scheduled work in the bond, the ones on page thirty-four do not have scheduled work in the bond.
So fifteen of them. So my question is, just, is there a reason that we can't get started with that work as opposed to spending this money, doing the small repairs? Is there a reason we can't just move forward with the bond work?
W- we are moving forward with the planning on the bond work, but we believe that in order to stop leaks and, and immediately save what's under the roof, we, we need to address leaks now.
So these are immediate?
Yes, ma'am.
Leaks that need to be addressed? When, when is the work gonna be done, the bond work gonna be done on these roofs?
Depending on the phase, I actually, uh, this afternoon received some information on which phase they're in, so it, it, they're in different phases, you know, but it's, so it depends on which, which, uh, school, but they're in various phases of the bond, and, um, we're gonna get that information to you. Some, some are phase one, some, some are phase two, some are phase three, so it's spread out over the next, you know, three or four years.
I asked the very same question, and someone emailed me a nice list, so I'm sharing it with Mrs. Tosan, but I think it'd be nice if you could maybe share that with the rest of the board.
Yes, ma'am, we're gonna provide that to, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Do we have questions on this, additional questions? Mrs. Tosan and I had the same concern, that why are we gonna patch these leaks if we are gonna fix these roofs? And, um, so I share your, I share your angst. Would you like to comment on that?
I just said, we, we share the roof leak angst also.
Right, but I will say, I was at Marshall's Academic Excellence, and it was a, it was a rainy day, or there'd been rain, I guess, a couple of days previous, and there I was on the stage with the, the kids' letter, letter jackets and their plaques and all these things, and, and water was dripping from the ceiling, and they were covering the whole thing with plastic so that we wouldn't get wet while we handed out the academic excellence awards.
I apologize that that happened, that's, that's not how that's supposed to be.
Yes, and I apologized as well to the staff who was there and to the students who were getting their awards, it was kind of sad, so. I, I can see Marshall's on the list.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question then.
Yes.
If we have, um, these repairs, you have to get, they have to be approved by us at the next board meeting, is that what needs to be done, for us to immediately get to those repairs?
Yes. Yes.
So?
Because the, because the aggregate of the cost is over fifty thousand dollars, that's why we have to approve it.
Okay, so why wasn't that, couldn't that have been an action item for tonight?
I guess it could have been, I didn't, I didn't know about it, so.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, please come to the microphone. And also, you're gonna need to turn on the microphone. If it still has any batteries left.
It's at the top.
Right next to the red light. I do wanna say, uh, we've requested this, this is all in the context of normal maintenance, uh, we would actually be able to address, and we are actively addressing leaks, uh, as we discovered, every time we go through these temperature cycles, our building shift, when the building shifts, you introduce a potential for a potential roof leak, and all we're trying to do is address them until these roofs can be fully vetted through the bond process, but every roof leak that occurs, we are addressing. Some of those come in at fifty thousand, or some of them are addressed at thirty, forty thousand, we, we, we will address it, some of them at six and seven. So we're addressing them as they come, we're not waiting for this, all this money does is help us go through the contracting process with some expedience, 'cause otherwise we have to wait and go through the entire contract process for each one of these actions, and that's really what shoots us. We're in a very active rain cycle right now, and all we're trying to do is expedite the repair. So I hope that helps clarify some of the intent for the, for the action.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, we definitely want it to be expedited, 'cause we don't want water on our students, on our board members, on our wards, um, so, definitely, anything, that's why I asked, could we not have made this an action item for tonight, to, to expedite your process?
Yeah, so he's saying he's working on it, so it, it's okay. The list is long, repair list is long. Is that right, Mr. Cleaver? All right, let's move on now, we've got network infrastructure cabling for the east region, woo-hoo! Uh, do we have questions on this one? Mr. Pham, thank you for the very nice memo, um, that you provided to us, it gave us a lot of explanation about this, we appreciate that effort very much. Any additional questions for Mr. Pham? All right, uh, seven's been removed, so the number, well, C eight, Oracle licenses and services. To expand. Sorry, I'm skipping the, through the pages. All right, do we have questions on this one?
Can you explain a little bit to me about the licenses and why we're, um, we're just, we're adding more licenses here?
Uh, yes, ma'am, uh, what we do, what we do is, we base the, uh, contract on the amount of budget, and originally it was four hundred and ninety, uh, I think it's, uh, make sure that I said it right, four hundred and eighty million dollars budget, uh, this is dated back in two thousand and, uh, six, contract that when we signed with Oracle, and each year we have to self-report, uh, on the financial side. So happened, so happened that, uh, on this year, August nineteenth, we submitted to Oracle, and it was five hundred and, uh, seven million dollars, so we owed them, uh, the difference. So this is based on the, uh, amount that, uh, we have on budget.
Okay, and so, so when, when will this come back up again then?
I'm sorry?
When will this come back up again?
This will come back in March when we renegotiate the new contract with Oracle. This is just to shore up what we owed them.
Okay, right, okay.
Kind of an interim, something in the interim, right, because our budget, this summer that we have is over the, so it's an interim effort.
This will allow us to go up to five hundred, uh, twenty million dollars. Because they go in in forty million dollar increment.
Okay.
Are you, you don't, you don't, are you still a little confused, you get it?
I get it, I just have a lot of questions when it comes to Oracle and, um, how we do licenses with them, so I, I'll take some questions offline.
Yes, ma'am.
Perfect.
So, I have, I have a.
Yes, Mr. George.
I'm trying to understand it, you said five hundred?
Twenty million.
Twenty million?
Yes, ma'am.
Over how long?
That's our budget, our, that's our budget for the year.
Oh, your budget for the year?
That's correct, that's based on our.
The whole school district budget.
Okay, yeah, I, I get that, I was just thinking, okay.
This is based on our CAFR.
Okay. Get it.
It, right, okay. All right. We're all there, okay? Uh, then, that completes our purchasing items, we didn't even get to hear from Mr. Fazakerley tonight. The rest, all right, well, we'll save up some questions for you for next time. Moving on then to seven D, which is the, uh, some PDOTS appraisers, addition to the PDOTS appraiser list, and there they are. Any questions about those folks? Thank you for getting your, doing your certification. Uh, next is, uh, item seven E, which is Fort Bend ISD's voting entitlement to the CAD Next is item seven E, which is Fort Bend ISD's voting entitlement to the CAD board. So, we have, there are five candidates, and there are five positions, because I asked about this. And we have one thousand three hundred and thirteen votes that we can allocate how we would like, so we have a discussion.
Yes ma'am, President. I thought we had already approved this.
Well, what we did was we nominated Mr. Abramcheck and Mr. Key as nominees from Fort Bend ISD, because we have the opportunity to nominate folks, and those two we had nominated in the past, and they're currently serving on the board as the chairman and as the secretary of the board, and so we nominated them so that they could continue to serve if they wished, and they both wish to, and now we have to cast our votes. So we can vote, split our votes between the two of them, the ones we nominated, or we can split them in any other way that we would like, and that's what we, that's what this item is about. We have to define how we're going to vote. Our, I don't know what, our, it's not shares, but it's, I don't know what the word is. Our entitlement. So... Well, there are five nominees, and there are five positions, so we could, we nominated two of the people, Mr. Abramcheck and Mr. Key, so we could split our votes between those two people. These would be the, these would be the courses of action that we could choose from. We could split our votes between the two people that we nominated, Mr. Abramcheck and Mr. Key, or we could split our votes five ways between all five of the candidates, because there are five people running and five positions.
And I think we should, and I think we should do it just evenly, five, five ways.
Five ways between all five folks, okay?
Is there any information out there about these people? We could, I could look it up, or?
Yeah, there's some information right here in this, that little short blurbs in this letter that's in your packet, and there's Google. We can get you some more information, Mr. George, if you...
I think most of them have served on the board already, if not all of them.
They have. I believe they, I believe that is correct. I don't know about the man, Mr. Mason. I don't know if he's been on the board before or not. But the other four have been and are.
Okay, so there are five, and they're going to be elected no matter how we split it?
Yeah. This is really hard for us to decide for some reason. So... No, because I want this written up, because otherwise it'll be really messy when we come back.
I agree with Ms. Heliger. I think we should just split them evenly.
Split the votes between the five.
The five that are going to be on there anyway.
Okay. You're right, that, is everyone okay with that? Mr. Rice seems a little...
Thank you KP.
He'll come around, okay.
Ms. James, if I appreciate this correctly, just so the board's aware, apparently the number of votes cannot be evenly divided numerically amongst the five.
Is that because it, is that because it's...
Alright, well then I'm going to suggest, I'm going to suggest we take one thousand three hundred and ten divided by five, and then we give Mr. Key two extra votes since he's the chair, and Mr. Abramcheck one extra vote, because he's the secretary and they're the people that we nominated.
Second.
Third. Alright, we're not voting on this tonight, but Mr. Morris, we're counting on you to do the math, and there, we have some content specialists in that area, if you have trouble. Contact the curriculum department. Alright. For the math. Well, we've seen Mr. Morris before in his math, so we know to double-check it. Minutes, sorry, I might be getting tired. Minutes, do we have any questions, changes, corrections, or comments regarding the minutes? Except to say that thank you, Mrs. Kaiser, for faithfully recording them and typing them, and listening to us, and then typing some more. We appreciate that. And so, that brings us to our information item, which is regarding the district strategic plan. Dr. Whitbeck, that is for someone from administration to share with us.
It is, but we have Beth Martinez, who will be giving us an overview tonight. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you. Thank you all. Well, it's been a couple of months or so since I first provided you the high-level overview of the strategic planning process that was, that we were undertaking at that time, and so I want to give you this evening a brief overview and status update on the work that's been done since I last spoke with you about our plans, and the work moving forward in the coming weeks, that we'll be providing to you in an update format, and then also working with you all toward the end of this week to engage in some back-and-forth information, and to help get some input to our executive team members, so that we can help to shape that plan. So what we've been doing since we last talked is working to align, we kind of have a three-part process, or three very important parts of our strategic plan, and that is the goals and priorities from the board, that we have been aligning our strategy with, within the departments that serve as lead on the various goals and the priority performance expectations, so that we're meeting those targets, and we're creating very strategic actions to help support that work and accomplish the goals of the board. The second piece is the district needs, and so we have started, not started, we are in the process of and have been engaging with various departments across the administration departments to conduct needs assessments at the district level. So within a specific department, what are the needs at the district level that I might support in my department, or I might need to be able to address within my plan for impacting the district as a whole? And so there's been SWOT analysis and district data used to help drive the needs assessment at the district level. And then within each department, departments have been conducting needs assessments, SWOT analysis, looking at, for example, in the curriculum and instruction department, looking at student achievement data, student test data. We've used survey data from our various surveys throughout the year, as well as our internal audit and external audit information, particularly the district audit, previously known as the curriculum audit. There was a deficit audit that we commissioned to show us where the gaps are, and where, what we need to be doing in a comprehensive way across the district, so that we can bring all of the recommendations from those various areas, and all of the needs that our data has been showing us and is showing us, into one comprehensive strategic plan. And within that strategic plan, I mentioned, we're aligning with the goals and priorities of the board. We're establishing our own goals within our various departments to address the needs of the district and the needs of the department. We're also driven by the Texas Education Code, TEA, to provide, if requested, a district improvement plan, and to have that available to the public, and so we've conducted the comprehensive needs assessment in the areas that relate to curriculum and instruction, and that is more than the curriculum and instruction department, as you know. That's our special education, special programs, federal programs, advanced academics, ESL bilingual, college and career readiness. And so Megan Evans, who you met earlier this evening, led that group of leaders in a comprehensive needs assessment process, through some protocols, and looking at the student achievement data, and it's not the multiple measures of data that we have that we're really using in a strategic way. It's more that state assessment that we must look at, and identify the gaps and the needs, and write specific objectives for targeting based on student groups and based on each area, so that objectives can be written to improve the performance in those areas. And that reminds me of a question, Mr. George, that you asked when I presented last, about how does the district strategic plan tie in or support the campus improvement plans? And really, that's that alignment piece, in looking at what the district is doing to identify the needs, and to create specific objectives to help improve in those areas. So there's a strategic planning component, but there's also a very important improvement planning component, and we're working to bring all of those together, along with all of the documents and all of the recommendations, as I stated, about internal and external audits, and the various needs that we've identified within our departments and within the district, aligned with your goals and priorities that we are working to meet. So in order for that to be very comprehensive, aligned, and consistent across the board, another component of this work has been meeting with the various stakeholders, because our work in the various departments impacts each other. We may need, I may need something from community relations, or her work may impact my area, and so as you know, with all the day-to-day and everything that the work of the day entails, that is really the time component that has probably been the most challenging, is finding the time for the stakeholders to come together and review the data, review the plans, review the objectives and the strategy within our own departments, and then make sure that we're not at cross purposes, and that we're not in conflict with the goals and objectives of each other's departments, so that we're able to support and know where those handoffs are, so that it makes the most sense strategically, and we can certainly continue in that plan-do-study-act continuous improvement model that I shared with you back in August. So our next steps, we'll be talking with you further this week to get input from you all as a board, and to help shape those plans. We want to make sure that in addition to what we're charged with doing, you know, from the state level in terms of the improvement planning process, and what you've lined out for us in the goals and priorities of the board, that we are making sure that we have your perspective as community members, to ensure that we are accountable to the community in terms of what the important needs of our local stakeholders are, and that we are addressing that when we do make the final deliverable to you all in January or February with the comprehensive strategic plan, that we have identified not only those items and those assessment pieces and components at the state level, and at the district and department level, but that we haven't missed something locally that really needs to drive the improvement plan, those multiple measures of our performance, so that we can make sure we're watching all the right gauges and indicators moving forward.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez, for that update. Do we have questions?
Yeah, quick question. How are you planning on getting input from us this week?
On Friday.
On Friday, at the team building, at the team building on Friday.
Oh, yes, okay, thanks.
Do we have any other questions? Do we have any other questions? Alright, thank you, Ms. Martinez. We'll look forward to talking about this some more.
Thank you.
Okay, great. We have some audience response to our agenda review items tonight. And, our first speaker is Heather Rudolph.
Hi, I'm Heather Rudolph. I'm the PTO president at Colony Meadows. I know y'all didn't really discuss this tonight, but I want to go ahead and touch on the topic of our, excuse me, our pavilion. First of all, thank you for your support for our PTO board, and for the projects that make our school and community even better. We appreciate all the Fort Bend ISD person, Fort Bend ISD personnel that have walked us through this process. Just to update you guys on a few things that we've done recently and discussed recently as a PTO board, we were notified that the opposition group was concerned about the level of noise that the pavilion could bring, so we were notified of that on our, on October thirteenth, at the community meeting that was held. The PTO board promptly began discussion on that topic the next day at our PTO board meeting. It was agreed that information would be researched on different noise mitigation options and costs. The topic will be broached once again at the coming November eleventh, PTO board meeting, under unfinished business. No decisions have been made by the PTO in regards to pavilion noise mitigation, but the discussion is ongoing. Also, I'm sure you're aware of the community meeting that we held. In addition to that, some other things that we did, we received many emails from opposition and proponents, and compiled all of those emails, and then the entire PTO board was aware of all submissions. Those will be included in our October minutes, they're going to be posted online. Every question that has been received has given, there has been a response. Please note that the responses may not have had the answers the opposition was looking for. Maybe that is why they feel that PTO cut off discussion. I'm not quite sure on that one. You guys know about the community meeting that we held. In addition to the format that was suggested to us, where we had people speak for it and against it, we also, as a PTO, decided to open, to have a more open dialogue and a Q&amp;A format. That was something that I decided to do after I heard about some complaining on a Facebook post, so I decided to go ahead and have an open dialogue as well. After that open dialogue and community meeting, we were contacted by the opposition group to answer additional questions, and so we met with them again on October sixteenth.
Thirty seconds.
And answered questions, and we brought some of that back to Ms. Boulding. So that's where we stand, and we are still continuing, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Rudolph, very much for being here tonight. Our next speaker is Lulie Carom.
Hello, boards of trustee members. Thanks so much for giving us this time to speak. I just wanted to clarify a couple of things that possibly the opposition has reached out to you guys via email, to discuss a drainage issue that we have at our campus, and yes, indeed, we do have some drainage issues. They have always been in place, and we are continuously working with facilities. For example, we had a heavy rain a few weeks ago, and a big portion, I believe you guys received photos of that, a big portion of our playground had a lot of water. Well, facilities came out promptly, they cleared out a drain, and it drained it out. The next week we had some more heavy rain, and we didn't have that problem again. So those photos were representative of an issue we were having with a clogged drain, but facilities has addressed it. Also, some of the more shallow drainage issues that do exist are going to be opposite to where our structure is at, so it's not encompassing that area. And also during the planning stages of development of the project, we actually did reach out to an engineer, the person, the engineer company that did our soil assessment, and we were asking them if we needed to do any kind of drainage system before erecting a structure so large. They recommended that since the volume of rain that falls is going to be the same whether you have, you know, the cover or not, and our hardtop slopes downward, all it's going to do is slow down the rainfall just by a few minutes to the same existing spots, and so they recommended you build the structure. If you've changed the topographical map, then later on you can come in and do more extensive work if needed, but if there's really no major drainage issues right now, then you're okay going forward. So that drainage issue is not a problem that came up, or a concern that came up from the community meeting. It was already discussed during the planning stages. Also, there was some concern from the neighborhood as to why we're using a metal structure versus a fabric structure, and during the planning stages, again, we talked about how fabric structures, the top needs to be removed during hurricane threats. So if a hurricane's coming and you're going to have potential wind speeds, you need to remove them, and yes, you can replace them, but that's an additional cost, and then you would actually have to have a service be able to come out during hurricane time to do it. And so that seemed to be...
Thirty seconds.
A little bit of a reason why we went with a metal structure. Also, it just, it's leak-proof. Our kids can come out in mild drizzle versus fabric structures leak when there's a consistent waterfall, so I just wanted to clarify those few topics as to the concerns from our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carom. Our next speaker is Michael Hennessy.
Thank you. My name's Mike Hennessy. I'm a parent at Colony Meadows, and a member of the PTO. I'm not here to talk about the issues that they've had going back and forth. What I wanted to say is, as a parent, I do support our PTO board that we have. We do elect them. They are volunteers. I think they're doing a fabulous job. I've served both on the school board, as well as on a neighborhood association board in the past, and I know how hard both sides of that can be, but I think they've done a great job, and I just wanted to let you... But I think they've done a great job, and I just wanted to let you know as a parent our appreciation. I know that they're, that the PTO is funding the majority of this, but they also do have the parental support, because that's where the rest of it's coming from, is the donation from the parents, so. Just want to thank you very much for your time, I've really enjoyed the meeting tonight, it's been very educational. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Hennessy, thanks for staying the whole thing. So appreciative of that, thank you to all of our audience who's here tonight. Having no further business, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, meeting adjourned.